The Selective Office has been great about handling things, but if they don't know what it is we're doing, if there's nobody that's informing them of this is what our next plan is, then they're not responsible for putting in the notice. So we have to have somebody who's savvy at, just as Sarah's saying, about the requirements, the rules, regulations, who's willing, who's done and how to put stuff in.
And not just that, it's just some understanding of the content of what we're talking about. Because we have secretaries in the past who really did not understand what the discussion was and was unable then to summarize it.
As far as the noticing, that's something we could do.
Well, that's also something I can do if I'm thinking, when I'm thinking. I apologize, I've been a little lost. My wife's still in Boston with a knee, and I've been down there and kind of hanging out with her. I didn't get out into town, so I'll try to do a better job. I can't take minutes, I'm almost over it, so.
Well, I haven't done this before, but it's just been going through.
Well, there's been some kickback about that, so it may be time to...
I prefer none of us turn it with ramp. If we could, but if we can't, then we can't.
Well, I just, the planning board had duty to play in taking minutes for years.
Oh, yeah, I mean, where's the Conservation Commission?
They don't want a member who takes one.
Takes a minute.
Takes the secretary. Yeah, like even now, we're me doing it. Tonight, I wasn't really prepared for that, and I want to be paying attention. And also speaking.
Well, the fact that it's been reported.
Part of it is you've got to back up or not.
No, I didn't. Even when I miss a meeting, I usually watch it.
That's been helpful to me, but I've been type of...
Like searching for comments or...
There definitely times for like more and more of the discussion.
Discussion, you're not going to follow it.
Well, this is a point, you know, you can, a note to tape are just, you know, topics, things that are pertinent.
You know, that's an interesting point, too. They say that the requirements or the minutes are that you record the actions that are taken. You don't have to record all the discussions and so on.
It doesn't have to be a word for word.
Yeah, Mark Toven takes extensive minutes, which can be too cumbersome sometimes. Depends on what people want.
The minimum requirements, to me, are just the minimum requirements. I'd rather have, like, how did we come to the decision? You know, and some of the things, some of the more important key things, I would say, I didn't, you know.
I agree, you could have a little bit of that down.
I believe that's what's happened until now.
Yeah, you've done a good job.
Well, I would continue if people wanted, but I, you know, if people would prefer not, it's totally up to you now.
Well, no, we make the decision now.
John and Bea are coming back, aren't they?
John's coming back.
Is it, this is a stupid question or whatever it is, is it a law that we have to have somebody that's not a member? Or is it against the law that we have a member? Okay, okay, I didn't know, that's why I was asking.
No, that's totally acceptable to have a member be the secretary of the planning.
Now, the other question I have is, is it stopping Betsy from participating more in what's going on because you're busy working down?
I don't think so, because...
I know you've done this forever, but I mean, that's always...
Yeah, I tend to get wrapped up in what the discussion is, and I sometimes forget to take the notes, and then I have to go back and see who moved that and so on. Oh, well, the suns are...
I took minutes at the Conservation Commission several times, you know, to fill in, and that's what I kept doing. I kept not getting, you know, I was so involved in partying, I'd go back and say, oops, I didn't write anything for that.
And so then, thanks to Hank.
And thank, God, thank.
Now, do we need to have it because we already have Hank do all that stuff for us?
Legally, yes.
Oh, legally, okay.
We have to have something postable within 72 hours.
Oh, okay, okay, and like you said, communicating with the girls and what goes on and things that nobody really knows.
That, to me, is the most critical thing. We've got to have somebody who cares enough about getting notices out and so on, that we make sure that Julie posted in the newspaper or whatever it is.
You also want to have them for historical purposes.
Oh, that's true.
Couldn't the minutes be done by a minute taker, and then when we have to have something posted for a public hearing, Dick say, look, I'm out of town next week, Kathy, could you do the postings?
Or just have one person...
Do the postings.
Who did, that's just their responsibility to, you know, one member who knows what the rules are.
I've nobody's got for that. Why do you think I...
They're running the chairs for worse.
That's all you had to do.
Larry, do you have any of those things you've been talking about a lot, it's busy?
Oh, yeah, John as well.
Thank you. That's good, that's a joke, that's good, that's me, thank you.
Call the meeting order. We have seven members here, so everybody will vote. You want to write down the full call?
I've got it.
Okay, good. Here. Okay, then we'll have the... No, let's do the minutes of last meeting. Everybody get a copy of the minutes. We have more.
Thank you.
I do have just a little minor thing that was probably just a hiccup on here, it doesn't really mean anything, but when we were doing the nonconforming structures, this is on the back page, 2.2.3, for a greater width, and I think it should have or a further depth. I think just, we had the word in there before, and it wasn't put back in there again. It just doesn't make any sense with the word or. It's line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right in the middle on 2.2.3. A greater width, and then it says a further depth. It probably should have said or a further depth. Just a little minor nothing, but just makes it sound like... I just thought it would suck back every time I reached Betsy on the original one.
I'm sorry, could you say that, I didn't hear what you were proposing?
No, it's just a little typo, or it's 2.2.3, and if you go down right in the middle, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, for a greater width, and then it says a further depth within the prescribed ski area, setback area. It said for a greater width or a further depth within, I just think the word or should be put in there, that's all, it's just a...
Yeah, so that's just adding it in, it's not in the current...
I don't know, I overlooked it.
So maybe it should be nor a further depth?
Nor?
Nor or which is...
If there's already a not in there, it can't be nor.
Not nor, not nor, Dan, nor?
It's not the other one either, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Yeah, and the reason, I guess, it wasn't in here is that the...
Nor to...
...greater height.
We took out.
How about just greater dimensions?
Can I make a statement to this?
Sure. We allow greater height.
I'm wondering if it isn't redundant, what we're discussing. Reading 2.2.3, "A nonconforming structure of building may be moved, altered, enlarged, altered, restored, or replaced within the boundaries of the lot it occupied at the time this ordinance took effect. Providing the change does not make the structure more nonconforming in any way." That says you can't increase into the setback any further.
Right, you're going to use the footprint.
Yes. And so I think everything after that...
Is redundant.
Isn't necessary. I mean, everything after that.
Well, it looks like you're defining more nonconforming. Then you're defining more nonconforming, meaning more nonconforming in any way means...
But more nonconforming means just what it says. You don't have, in fact, by putting...
You're right.
By putting into an ordinance, by putting example, is sort of not an ordinance.
But we were looking to allow greater expansion in height and volume.
Yes.
And if you say it can't be more nonconforming in any way, doesn't that still prevent the volume increase?
No.
I'm just going to say, we're going to deal with this next.
Okay, oh, I thought you were on that, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just trying to...
We're on the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And really...
It's my hearing.
Yeah, I remembered where my amplifier is.
Did you? I wish I had one.
Maybe you don't have yours, you don't have one.
We really don't.
I thought Kathleen was talking about the...
No, I was just talking about the minutes of the meeting, and I just happened to say...
Well, so maybe we ought to look at that one.
Yes, but I think we're going to iron this out...
In the next.
In what will be the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
I guess the minutes reflect what we discussed, but maybe...
They're close.
Kathleen, when I can speak, throw me a minute.
Okay.
From a bone.
The bits are all over there, I can't throw you one.
I have the couch. Okay? Okay, all right, okay. That'd be wonderful.
Second?
Second. All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
All right.
New post. Okay, now, public comment, is there anything from the public to discuss that is not on the agenda? With that strong silence, I will now go to the public hearing. Review of the proposed changes to zoning ordinance regarding setbacks, bottom restrictions for nonconforming structures. Well, maybe we should go right to that 2.2.3. Okay, yes, sir.
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Of course.
First, since I was having to do a public hearing notification at the same time when yours came across, I caution you that I don't think your notice for this meeting met the requirements, because there was really no reference to the text of the ordinance you're considering. And you need that. In fact, the description of at least the setback required change, which effectively reduces the setback almost in half, as I understand it, wasn't really described in the meeting. And the notice, or the, I'm sorry, public notice, as well as the URL of the public notice was inaccurate. It pointed to the old webpage for town. So I think there's a real deficiency there, and hopefully you'll fix on the next time around.
Okay, have we got time to have another public hearing?
Yes, we do.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Then we'll go to that, and I don't want to have any controversy of whether this is a legal public hearing or not. So when can we have a public hearing?
I think February 6th or something like that is the latest, so we've got lots of time.
Yeah, but we don't, oh, we, so we could do it at our January meeting?
Right.
But we'd have to leave the ability to have a second one just in case.
Yes, before February 6th. If we need it, then we can schedule it even a week later, or 10 days later if we want to do a 10-day window. So then we will dissolve the public hearing.
I mean, there's something I know?
May I finish my comments?
Sure.
If I could. More generally, I would urge you, now coming, speaking as the chairman of ZBA, and in part because we just went through a court hearing that dealt with this specific issue.
Which, which issue?
Well, I'm about to describe that, if I could. It's particularly important for the ZBA in its process to understand the purpose and intent of every part of the zoning ordinance. If you look in the zoning ordinance, the purpose and intent of the River Conservation District is clearly laid out. That is not the case for the setback requirements. It's uncertain, looking at the zoning ordinance, why the setbacks are there and what the intent is. Jerry, of course, in our ZBA meetings, has suggested the intent is for it to provide the public private parking, a snow removal. If that is indeed the case, I think you need to say that in the preamble of the setback requirements for the zone, for the, in the zone ordinance, or whatever other reasons that you have for having setbacks. So that's particularly important, otherwise you have a situation where various members of the ZBA or the court are trying to determine what the voter's intent was in approving the setbacks. And that's always a, it's always a difficult process to try to discern that. So I strongly encourage you to do that.
What would, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What did you say would be the proper authority for defining what the original intent was or the thinking behind the board when they made that zoning ordinance?
I'm uncertain, I think that's why I'm suggesting that you should do with this amendment, if you proceed with it, to do what you did, what a prior planning board obviously did with the River Conservation District, which has a preamble that describes why that River Conservation District exists and what the intent of it is. You could easily have a preamble that says, we are doing this to provide for public parking and snow removal. You could have a preamble that does more than that, if there are other reasons. And I'll speak to what I think those other reasons are, because I think they are there. But the intent of my, of this part of my comments is to simply request that you include in the preamble to the setbacks requirement why the setbacks requirements are there in the first place.
Okay, so you are not...
Two of the comments, go ahead.
Thank you. You're not speaking of the new word, you're saying you should put a preamble of why there was a setback ordinance originally?
I don't think you have to fix what's happened already, but if you are going to open up the issue of setbacks with some amendments, I think it's an opportune time to improve the zoning ordinance. And certainly the people at the ZBA and the court, you have to interpret the zoning ordinance, why those setback requirements are there in the first place.
Makes sense.
Again, the River Conservation District is a good example, but, you know, much of the balancing ZBA has to do is to balance the restrictions placed on a homeowner for not being able to do something with the intent and purpose of the specific ordinance that's preventing them from doing something. So, you know, again, for example, if the, well, again, I think I'm repeating myself. So I'm not suggesting we have to go back and fix the entire zoning ordinance. So I am suggesting that if, in the future, as you amend various parts of the zoning ordinance, if you are, you're involved in that thought process, you try to include in the preamble for each section why you're doing this. Good, I'd also like to comment on the actual amendment.
I'd like to take this section at a time.
Go ahead.
You've made a long statement, and I'd like to deal with that.
Okay.
I'm just curious of the legal ramifications of that, because I think you're opening up, you know, further challenge to particular zoning ordinance, because now is it, you know, is the purpose or the intent still there? Is it, I think, I would definitely speak a legal opinion on that.
Well, it seems to me that I could, yeah. It's either you do it, or you're forcing the ZBA and the court to do that.
Well, I think there are historical documents that, you know, that you can go to to see what the intent and purpose was when the law was written, but...
Well, no, I disagree, I don't think it's...
Why wouldn't the master plan?
And the minutes.
Well, the master plan isn't, in terms of the document, isn't followed particularly.
No, but it could be a place to make the statement of, you know, why we're...
I agree with that.
Justify why we have setbacks. I mean, zero setbacks, I don't think anybody would want to look at. Do we have to state the aesthetics, the snow removal, the ability for parking in the ordinance, so?
I can make a couple points. The, there's a preamble on the River Conservation District because it's a district. This is, we don't do that for every ordinance, but if you needed to find out the intent of the planning board, you read our minutes at going, leading up to it. And we lay it out very clearly why we're doing it.
I think if I...
We've got a sheet here that we're going to...
Okay, I'll give that to you, right?
Yeah. But there are like six reasons right here why we are doing this. So if I, if I could understand... In reading that, the minutes describe various people's opinions about why you're doing it, sometimes contradictory. And seldom is there really a vote that it's clear that the planning board is doing it for X, Y, and Z reason. Now...
This was a place a long time ago.
I appreciate that, and I'm really speaking about going forward, that'd be an improvement. Obviously, it's not necessary, and the ZBA certainly will survive without it. It would simply make our job more clear and more easy to do.
We could make it more clear, like you said, in the master plan and inside our minutes.
Well, that's kind of like my next point.
Okay, so we're going to... With respect to writing a preamble, you would expect us to write a preamble to the height restriction? I mean, it just doesn't exist in ordinances. What you're describing doesn't exist. The only way that anybody could determine what the intent of the board was when they did something was to look at the minutes.
You must understand, I'm saying, I'm just describing going forward as you make new changes.
But to go further, to describe what the intent of the voter is when they pass, there's no way to do that.
No, no, if, if, that's the point, is if it is in the preamble to whatever the, if it's in, if it's part of the amendment, and the voter approved it, then that's fine. Well, that would signify their agreement with the intent.
If you're not changing anything, you don't need a preamble. If you're going to do some changes, this may be the opportunity to clear what the actual intent of the article was.
That's essentially what I'm suggesting.
And whatever in the past was in the past, and, you know, we're moving forward with this, and if it doesn't need adjusting like the height requirement, we don't have to handle it. But if it needs adjusting, we're going to do one then. You know, this is the time to do it, if you're going to do it, is what he said.
So the setback is a small portion of this Section 4 that deals with districts, the amens and the regulations. And to do a preamble that each of those sections seems cumbersome, to do one on frontage. We want this much frontage because we want to be sure that there's, you know, a line of sight, or... It doesn't seem to make sense. I can see it's really important to have a purpose section where you're doing cluster explanation or something other about accessory apartments. You know, we don't have any explanation of why we have communication tower antenna regulations, why we have floodplain regulations.
Well, actually, there are quite a few, and I'm just going through a...
There are purpose sections about four or five times throughout our ordinance, but not a...
But they're at a section heads.
Right.
And we have a purpose authority for the whole planning, for the whole zoning ordinance is right in the beginning of Section 1. And many of the other sections do have a paragraph preamble.
For example, even with minimum lot size, there are lots of good reasons for having minimum lot size, but we don't say anything about them in a purpose section. I think it doesn't make sense to have a purpose section within the Section 4 about setbacks.
Again, I've got to undermine the authority in, you know, in, that's in the court of law, because if, you know, if we say the purpose and the intent of this ordinance is X, then now conduct the opportunity for someone that doesn't want to follow that ordinance to say, well, they can serve that purpose.
Well, they have that right now, that's what the ZBA determines. We have to make a decision whether or not, as part of our balancing of the various rights between the town, the general public, and the individual, is whether or not what they want to do, which is a restriction, a hardship on them, whether or not what they want to do is, in removing that right from that individual, we have to come to the conclusion that the purpose of that ordinance, whatever we're talking about, the general public purpose, the why the town is, I'm not being very articulate, but the, that the general welfare and benefit from the imposition of that ordinance is fairly balanced by the restriction from that individual not being able to do what they want.
Right, and what I'm saying is that if they then don't get the answer they want from you, putting that type of language in would open up the opportunity for them to go to a court of law, you know, to...
Well, that's true, but that's the same argument, what made it...
It would be specific enough, Frank, in our master plan, as people have said, we don't know exactly what the voter's reasons are for having setbacks. But if we can cover the basis in the master plan...
That was my next comment, is it's also, you know, a, actually, a requirement that, of course, you can do a master plan and then implement zoning based on what's in the master plan. It would, of course, be helpful if the master plan doubled out as much as possible the reason for various parts of the zoning ordinance. And again, an opportunity would be to identify in the master plan, that would lead to me, the ZBA is instructed first to go, if it's not in the zoning ordinance, then go to the master plan to see what the intent of the planning board was. And not so much their minutes, but actually what the, what they're trying to implement from the master plan.
I think it's the other way around. I think the master, the planning board acts according to the master plan.
Yes.
The master plan doesn't describe...
But you are, you were, you, in developing this zoning ordinance, you are implementing the master plan, so I think we're agreeing.
Frank, in the current zoning ordinance, the way it is, 50 feet from the front line of the property, of the roadway.
Is that now?
Correct?
It's 50 feet from the right away for the roadway.
Right.
Yeah, a little longer.
And you're saying that the master plan and whatever preamble existed defines that?
Well, no, what I'm suggesting is, in writing the master plan, you should be developing goals such as preserving the, especially based on the survey, preserving the village atmosphere, from preserving a rural village, presumably preserving deep mountain views and so forth.
That's still doable for us. Where we haven't completed the master plan or finishing it up, it's doable.
Where we haven't completed the master plan or finishing it up, it's doable.
Yeah, but that's all stuff that's true here. And what happens is...
It is.
And the ZBA then looks at, says that, okay, if we're looking at setback, you look at everything in the master plan that might impact the setback and say, okay, those are the reasons for the setbacks. I mean, far better if you actually specified what you meant in the ordinance itself, but if it's not in the ordinance, we'll look to the master plan.
Well, we could tweak the master plan still and make sure that that's, you know, that's a good suggestion, I think.
I mean, and then now to, as terms of specific proposals, as an individual now, not the ZBA, I'm, I think, the, the, first, in terms of whether you measure from the sun of the roadway or the edge of the roadway, I think it's not, I don't...
Except where the roadway isn't where it says it is.
Yeah. Because...
But do you look at two... Don't you read the point, that the master plan should define keeping the rural quality and things like that?
Nothing's changing on that.
And that's the very same thing. And who defines what a rural quality is?
Well, that's...
And of course, I've upheld that anyway.
Well, no, I mean, the ZBA, well, what I'm going back to my first comment is far preferable for the planning board to specify in the ordinance itself what the intent is for any particular section. Failing that, the ZBA and the court, but mostly the ZBA, will look at the master plan to try to determine why a particular section of zoning ordinance exists.
Do you do that now with the way it already is?
We do.
Yeah, you can.
Well, we do, but for example, I would, and...
If you had to change this, then it wouldn't mean anything.
I mean, for example, let's go back to training and go to building height limitations.
We're not changing that.
It's often thought of, besides the fire safety, another reason for building height limitations is to preserve views. And in the training that I've gone to, it's, you know, you can see how that could be a reason for a building height limitation, but also suggests that if somebody's building on an island or on a peninsula where there are no surrounding people and they see the variance for a higher building height, you probably should give it to them because they're not imposing on anybody's views.
The court has never upheld...
The view is not the same.
They have upheld the protection.
I'm sorry?
The courts have never upheld...
I'm sorry, that's not accurate.
It is accurate.
Well...
But you're making it sound like the only reason for height limitation is to preserve views.
I'm not, I didn't say that. I said in addition to fire and other reasons.
Okay, well, you just made this peninsula reference that wasn't obstructing anybody's view, but it still has fires.
No, but the point is that the ZBA would look at, that would be grounds for the ZBA to consider a variance in that specific application, whereas if it were a building in the center of town, the ZBA might be less inclined to give weight to the factor that views are not being as well.
So you'd say the house all by itself in the woods with nobody looking at it could get a higher, could get a variance to be able to build higher?
The...
Yes, the zoning board did approve very recently that going above the height restriction at Wentworth Hall. And we didn't discuss at all whether it had anything to do with a view or blocking a view, or whether it was attractive to anybody else. It was because the applicant said he wanted to keep it comporting with the rest of his building, and so we approved it.
And, and, and...
And I really think your...
No, I'm giving off much of this, but I intend to say, but the implication, the way I would respond to that would be to say, if it were clear from the zoning ordinance itself that the purpose of the height limitation was to, for fire safety and solely for fire safety, it would make the ZBA's decision there much easier because we would probably have denied the wentworth variance then. But that wasn't in the zoning ordinance, and in fact, fire safety, from what I remember, wasn't even in the master plan.
It is in the master plan.
And it was in the minutes, as Larry said, you know, through... I realize you can't go at each minute.
We can't go through, well, again, I think I've made my point.
You have to go back to the RSA's that enable you to have the legislation. The RSA's refer to fire safety, not to views.
Well, I guess, to make my point, if, in your clarity, on purpose and intent, either in the ordinance and certainly in the master plan, would be helpful with the ZBA. Now, speaking as a person, I'm concerned about both zoning or, both amendments. One, the effect of the setback amendment, you know, basically cuts the front setback in half, if you assume a 50-foot right-of-way.
Actually, it does, but...
Well, close.
It goes at a minimum of 35 feet. That's not in half.
Well...
And generally, it's 47.
Well, 37, half of 47 gets you close, I mean, 47 is close to 50, and, you know, in any, I think that's not consistent with what I thought I saw in the community survey and what I hope you put into your master plan, but the end, the point was. You know, I think that's a fairly significant reduction in the front setback, and I'm not, it's not clear to me why you want to do that. I have a stronger objection to what you're intending to do with the law and restrictions. I'm not confirming this, but that seems to, as I read it, it would essentially allow the snowflake which was prompted this to begin with to be built again. If, you know, because, and this, of course, is all put in because it's not like... So I think having that kind of limiting law and restriction is inconsistent with what voters want at the bottom of this end, and also inconsistent.
What do you mean? I'm sorry, I was the one that presented this to the board.
Pardon?
I was the one who presented these to the board, to the board, okay? I sit in that office when I'm doing my treasurer's job and listen to people that come to the windows about our zoning ordinances. I've talked to Goody about this, I've talked to Kevin about this, and I asked Kevin to look at these before I presented them to the board here. These are the questions he gets from people all the time about our zoning ordinances, and specifically those two zoning ordinances about our setback and our volume issues. And, for example, this is what he told me. There was a house up on title that the young people wanted to buy. Now, we're also dealing with affordable housing for young people. There are over 200 houses here in Jackson that are under $300,000. But they can't do anything with these houses because of our strict zoning ordinances.
Because they're not conforming.
Because they're not, because they're non-conforming. This is what we're talking, we're not talking about the person that wants to come in to the million-dollar mansion up there.
They want to put a door on it.
They can't put a door on it.
Or raise a roof line.
Or they raise a roof line.
What, what you approved that?
Well, I mean, I...
And, and, and we studied for a second. And so these people hence did not buy because there was nothing they could do with this property to enhance it. Now, we're not talking about putting a 20-by-40 addition onto a house or anything along that way. Now, Kevin told me there are restrictions already in our zoning ordinances to take care of this. So we already have it in place.
I'm not sure what you're referring to there.
Setbacks.
Setbacks and volume issues.
And set...
Is both of them.
And, and... When you take reference to the, there's other elements in the zoning ordinance that control that or limit that.
Um, that put it into safety, into a safety, into safety, so we don't have to worry about the 30, going over 35 feet.
Ask what the downside of increasing the volume would be. What's the downside of that?
Well, you know, for example, we just considered the situation where there's up on near Millen Road, there's a house on Walcott River. It was a fairly big deck in, within the 75 feet of the, of the river. If this, if you approved this amendment, they would be able to build a two-and-a-half-story of...
No, they would not.
A building on that deck.
Why would not?
Why not?
Because it doesn't include decks.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't include decks. That's not in the footprint of the house.
Right.
The deck is not in the footprint of the house.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't.
Of course, it's, well, first, there's, there's no...
It's not conforming already.
There's talk about structure.
Not a building. If it's in the River Conservation District, it's not conforming.
But this is to enlarge, allow the enlargement of the non-conforming structure.
Frank, when you approved the Dicky House expansion, he enclosed the porch, which you guys approved.
Well, again, I think, if I could, I'm responding to your question or somebody's question about what difference it makes. This is an example where somebody with a deck, in fact, anybody, and a deck, of course, is a structure, so that counts in the footprint. Anybody with a deck in a, in a, that's a setback.
I specifically asked Kevin how he'd interpret this, and I showed him Dicky's house, and I said, in the front of his house, the roof comes down and he's cut out a porch, like my house, there's a porch. And I said, would you consider that inside the footprint? He said, yes. I said, what about his deck on the back? He said, absolutely not. There is no roof over it.
But with respect, with respect to Kevin...
And so how it's interpreted is, is very important.
Yeah, with respect to Kevin, the structure, the comment here is on structure. That deck is clearly a structure, and to me, there would be no debate at all, at least within the ZBA, if you pass this. And Kevin denied the approval to build a two-and-a-half-story build of structure on top of a deck.
But if you build it on top of the deck, you're increasing the non-conforming...
Frank's absolutely right. If, if a, if a structure exists as non-conforming and it has a four-foot deck on the back of it, or the front of it, or the side of it, by taking away the volume limitation, he could enclose that deck.
Well, I thought you were saying that the deck was, was what was in the setback.
Yes, let's assume, yeah.
The whole, let's say the whole structure's in the setback.
Right.
And he has a deck or a porch.
Yeah.
And he has a roof that is like this on the house, and he wants to put a porch on it and go like that. Yes, that, on, on, by reducing, by eliminating the volume structure, he could do that. My question is, what's the downside?
Yeah, what's so bad about that?
Yes.
I mean, you did it with Dicky, and you don't have to approve that property.
Well, like I said, you know, an example was a fairly expensive deck that was on, within the 75-feet Walcott River Conservation District that they could have enclosed.
How many, how many properties like what you're describing exist?
Well, certainly everything up...
Even on the, you know, in that case bothered me tremendously because the River Conservation District, what we're concerned about is the river and how does a building affect the river? A septic system affects the river, cutting all your trees down to the river affects the river. Across the street, there's a tiny little house from that house, and he cut every last blade of grass down to the river. Didn't approve, the building was less than this table almost. But that affects the River Conservation District, not a building.
Certainly, because a building makes part of the ground more impermeable. Anyway, those were the comments I wanted to offer, really four things. Intent in the zoning ordinance, intent in the master plan, maybe finish the master plan before you do the zoning ordinance.
No, because it will never get done, and it'll be, wait another year, and there are people that are waiting to buy houses here in Jackson, and we have turned them away, Frank, and we need to have young people here in town.
I don't, I think the changes you're implementing here are probably far more extensive than I anticipate, but this is my personal belief.
Yeah, I understand.
And I understand where you're trying to go with this, so I'm not trying to...
And another thing too, I wanted to mention, having the center, Dicky put setbacks from the center of any road.
Which many towns have, by the way.
Many towns have it, Bartlett has it, Merton has it, it's not something new.
No, I don't, I mean, no matter how you measure it, you know, I'm ambivalent, I mean, you measure it from the centerline, you measure it from the edge of the right-of-way, you know, that's, to me, it doesn't matter.
He just wanted 50 feet.
He just wanted 50 feet. Well, I'm suggesting, I mean, if, let's assume from that at the moment, because the math is eager, that the standard right-of-way is 50 feet.
No, we're not saying from the centerline, what we're saying from the centerline of the road, the traveled way.
But that's...
Not what's for them done here.
Or, well, you can't, how do you determine that?
Well, the road exists.
Talking to the building inspectors and the people in Merton, they don't have any trouble with it at all. They know, they can see the road, and they can measure the, the centerline.
So there might be a one or two foot difference between the centerline of right-of-way and the centerline of the traveled way. Again, that's one or two feet. What you're doing, though, by keeping the 50-foot number the same, again, assuming for the simplicity of math, that you have a 50-foot right-of-way for the road with 25 feet on each side, you're going from the 50-foot setback from the edge of the road to 50 feet from the center of the road. And the road, since the road is 50 feet wide, you're...
We don't have 50-foot wide roads in Jackson, Frank, we have 20-foot wide roads.
No, that's many right-of-way, well, I said...
So what's your purpose or intent in keeping it the way it is? What purpose does that serve?
Well, I believe that we want, we want a more rural... I mean, I'm concerned that you're reducing the right-of-way by 20 or 25, this setback by 20 or 25 feet, and I, I think that's more than should be for a, for a front setback.
That sounds suburban, it doesn't sound rural.
That's how I agree with you.
Well, so, I mean, that's, that's my personal belief. And this is, this was public hearing, so I...
Okay, I did want to mention one thing more too about the setback from the center of the road as opposed to 50 feet from this side of the road back. This affects Tyrrell mound and then affects Hampshire Ridge. There's a house up on Tyrrell that was built right into the ledge, and they had to have dirt in to be able to put a septic system in, okay? Because they could not build closer to the road, they cut out the mountain. We're destroying our mountain, we're blasting our mountains up in Tyrrell to be able to put 50-foot setbacks in from the way it reads right now. The same thing is happening over at Hampshire Ridge. They're blasting into the mountain in order to be able to get that 50-foot back from that edge of the road, not from the center of the road, but from the edge of the road. Now, people have these properties, whether they've been let the properties, whether they've bought the properties, I have no idea. But they're building on there, and they're ruling the mountains.
Traditional northern buildings never had 50-foot setbacks.
Well, they, again, I'm, I don't want to argue with this, I'm just offering my opinion, which is...
Well, I'm offering my opinion too.
I appreciate, I mean, I don't represent the zone. But I'm not trying, I'm not, I did come here, I...
Well, I've heard from people, Goody mentioned it to me when he had it, he said, nothing will ever get done, nothing will ever get done about this, the ordinance is gonna stay the same. And I took that as a point that it needs to be done, and it needs to be done now. We can't wait another year and have people turned away because of the zoning, so we had specifically the volume and specifically the, the footprint, footprint. Because some of those houses up there, people took by, fixed them up, and live there, it's their dream house. And we're telling them they can't do it because of, you can't what? You can't add a dormer to it, you can't, any of that kind of stuff. And to me, that's, that's closing the doors, lock the doors, shut the gate at the, at the...
Okay. I'm sorry. You're not gonna convince them.
No, right, I'm sorry.
You're not gonna change this, Mike.
Oh, that's true.
He has expressed himself clearly.
Yeah.
And I think we'll take...
Thank you. I'm sorry. And, and, and thank you, thank you, Dick.
This one? Sorry, it was not that far away.
I'm sorry, Dick, thank you.
No, I didn't want it to get...
No, no, I know, I know, thank you.
But, you know, we have a suggestion.
Yeah, I get emotional, I shouldn't do that.
I think the main point of the preamble, not whether or not, I think we've hashed it out enough that as the planning board, we're gonna put it forward.
Yeah.
Okay, but what we have written on the sheet that's in front of me, it says, you're changing it from the sideline of any public or private road right-of-way to the centerline of any public road or private road right-of-way. And so you're, you're not changing the ambiguity aspect, which we're all talking about, where the building inspector said it's so much easier to measure it from the center of the road that exists without going back and doing all the research to find out where the right-of-way is. So if we're finding it from the center of the road, then we have to define that.
And I think, I think in terms of the intent, it's the traveled way. Because who cares where the right-of-way is on the map? What we really want is a certain distance off the physical road in terms of, you know...
And that's quite common in Jackson. What you just described was quite common.
We have one coming up that the people don't understand why they have to do a lot-line adjustment to get the right-of-way, the town's right-of-way, out of their living room where it is. Now, how it got built there in the first place, who knows?
What was that print?
So maybe it's the language that says, you know, if there is a.
Where is that, Dick? We have Stackhouse.
The top and where the right. You know where Stackhouse was?
Yeah, yeah.
Right across from Stackhouse. They're going to have to get a car from Stackhouse.
I spoke to the building inspector in Meredith, actually the code enforcement officer. And I spoke to our code building inspector. And neither one of them said there's no difficulty whatsoever in determining where in the center of the road is.
Okay, are we going to then run into any problems with, you know, if by removing right of way and getting, um, legal boundary lines? I'm just thinking about if the right of way is, let's say skewed over to one side. And so now instead of measuring from the edge of that paper, what's on the paper, right of way? Then to doing it from the center of the road, which means that if it's, there's quite a discrepancy. They may be building their, putting the building on land that they don't even own. If it's on the, if they're.
Don't they have to be?
Actually, if they eliminate the roads, are you on the land where the road is?
Right, but if they're building from the center line of the road, the road's in, uh, not centered in the right of way. Say it's skewed way over to one side, then they're ending up fifteen feet from the right of way. In the future, roads may be, we don't know what's going to happen. In the future, roads may be improved and they'll use the right of way, which they have now, fifty feet. And restructure the road to the center of that right of way. We don't know that.
But there's the lot line.
Again, I, when I first, when Kevin first came to Kathleen, he suggested, he said, fifty feet's too much. He said, we only need thirty-five. He said thirty-five from the sideline. When I suggested that to the board, you said, it's much simpler to go from the center line.
You said that, Dick.
And you were absolutely right.
Yeah.
And, and so I researched that in the state of New Hampshire. And just as many towns that do it from the sideline, do it from the center line. And I only talked to two. I talked to Meredith and I talked, because Meredith has topography not like us, but they have a lake and things like that that are other issues. And I said.
Do they use the wording right of way when they talk about the center line? Or do they talk about the traveled way?
No, they don't get tangled up in semantics. They look at where the road is and they're.
Yeah, what are some of the regulations though? That's because we're not, we're dealing with regulations right now. And I only brought up, my point is that in some places, the town owns the right of way. And you own from the edge of the right of way to, to your other boundaries. And maybe in some places, the town just has a, what would we call it, easement? So that you would then own to the center of the right of way. So the question is, how many rights of way, road rights of way in the town, does the town own? And therefore you make a difference. And on those, is the road in the center of the right of way?
Well, there's always a fifteen-foot easement for utilities and those sort of things. But that easement is within the property owner's land. Um, that easement doesn't go away. The.
The utility.
And, and if, if, if you're tripped up on the center line issue, then do the thirty-five feet from the.
What did he, if you're tripped up on, on the center line, what? The, the right of way or the traveled way?
Yeah, I mean, it's, if, I think, I think any one of us in this room could walk out on a road.
But it was simple.
Right, but that, um, in other cases, I don't need to get into others, but there, it has become a major issue as to whether the landowner owns to the center of the road or just, or does the, um, the utility or the town own where the road is? So who has the right to allow a utility line to vary along it?
The state has determined that if you own land on a road and that road goes away, you now own the land up to your neighbor. The guy across the.
If the property led us to the center of the road.
Okay, if the road goes away, but with the road there and a right, and a right of way and legal documents as to the ownership of land. My question is, then, um, is it true, all true Jackson, that the, wherever there's a road and you have two different owners on either side of the road, that their boundary line is the center of that road? That's, that's just my question.
That's not entirely true.
And that's not the, the center of the right of way. Right?
Yep.
So, but so if the road skews off the right of way.
In the road bank.
One, it encroaches into one property, so that pushes them further back by disorderance.
And allows the other one.
But the other one can't go on to the, they, they're still bound by the same limitation that they had before. Because they're bound by the right of way.
So then.
All engineering is going to show the right of way. So any proposal we get here is going to show the right of way. That's what they do. That's how they establish law.
And that's longer than.
Right.
Doesn't matter.
That right of way, uh, whether it's, right, the private road that goes in, they've established exactly what that right of way. So I don't think it's harmful to state it as center of the right of way.
So what if the right of way is skewed off? Can we say something?
The, the right of way doesn't get skewed, the road is skewed.
So can we say either or? So could we say?
No, no, I don't think. But here, here's the right of way.
Yeah.
Here's the road. This property owner, because now his setback has actually been pushed further into his property by the road skewer. Because if we say from the center of the traveled way, this right of way doesn't disappear. So this property owner is still bound by that center line.
Ah.
So I don't think it can cause the problem you described.
He says, you said right of, center of the right of way for the guy.
Because this is the lot line, it's the center of the right of way, right? So this property is bound by the lot line, which is at the center of the right of way. This property owner is bound by the center of the roadway because of the road veered off.
Well, we're going to have just one statement about setback in the ordinance.
I want to throw you another example, sir.
Well, we, we, we have a, here's, here's a.
If you pick something that's the least bad.
We have a setback off the lot line.
Here's, here's the, here's the, here's the plotting, right? Here's the plotting.
I think you're quoting the person to tell you. Just there, it's just simplifying this and making it easier.
Here's the plotted right of way on the town that the tax map would show. Okay, here's where the road's actually built. Okay? So if you measure fifty feet from this point for this man's construction and this man's construction, where this is, has nothing to do with it. But the center line of this piece, whether it's this wide or this wide, whether there's easements on it or not, is still the center line.
That's fine for that example.
It's any example.
No, it's not for, for what.
But what I'm saying in this example is that this property, this is, this is, the property line travels in the center of the right of way, right?
In the state of New Hampshire.
Then we have a, we have a setback off the lot line.
Right.
And so.
We'll set, okay.
So this property owner is limited by the setback off the property, which is the center of the roadway. We also have a setback off the road, right? If we say off, off the traveled right.
Okay.
Then this property owner is bound by, by that because the road's there.
But that means that he then has a bigger setback than.
He, he gets penalized. If we say off the traveled way, then he gets penalized. If we leave it as roadway, then he could build right on top of the road.
Of the plotted road.
Of the.
It doesn't exist.
We, we say only the, the right of way where the setback is, then this property owner could build on top of the actual road.
So what do we do to prevent that?
Well, if we say they're both, there's a setback off the lot line and a setback off the traveled way, then that prevents that overlap and that's being penalized.
How many of you have two?
But how you say we're allowed to penalize this property owner because the road is there?
So you're saying, you're saying that the cabinet or our building inspector would look at the plotted road and the actual road and measure from either one?
Well, this property owner would have to look at, this is the right of way here. This is the actual road.
Where, on, on the tax map, let's say.
This is the traveled way, this is the right of way.
Do we ever have it, roads that are right next to each other like that?
Yeah, we do. Well, well, he's talking about the same road and we have that in many places.
This one was never built, this one was what was built.
Right, right. And so, so.
It's plotted but was built.
Right, this, this road isn't here, but it's on paper there.
That's, that's the right of way.
Right.
Which is what we're talking.
This property owner's. But that's not the way it works. In talking to Meredith and in talking to Kevin, he would measure it from the roadway.
Okay, so how do we word that so that people understand that?
But then there's the possibility of putting this house over on this side of the road in the actual right of way.
Yes.
And I don't think that's a good precedent to set.
But you're never going to build that road.
But you can't, you can't build a house, you have, you still have to respect the lot line.
That's what I'm saying.
The engineering.
So, so this property owner asks, he's bound by the lot, not by the right of way, not by the.
The road.
He's bound by the lot line. This property owner, if you put the language in, is bound by the traveled way.
The traveled way.
Again, all we say is bound by the right of way. You know, the lot line can still exist. If we just say as far as roads, the right of way, then legally or technically, this, this property owner could build on the physical road because it's off the right of way.
Which, which is the physical road here?
That's it.
Okay, so, so this guy, in going from fifty feet, well, fifty feet this way.
Yeah.
And fifty feet this way, I mean, you don't want an animal. Um, so this guy's going to actually build in what is the plotted road?
No, because, because these objects are bound to the lot line, which is down the center of the right of way.
But he could build that. He could build right off.
They're making it more confused.
The guy who had that.
I guess what I'm asking is why is this relevant?
Why is this relevant?
Why is a road that doesn't exist relevant?
Because where the road exists, it just does not exist where it is plotted on.
But the road does exist. There is a road, right.
Road exists. It's not on the right.
But our wording doesn't say, right, our wording doesn't say traveled way if it's right of way.
Yes, it does. Here's the situation of Tyrrell. The house is in the right of way, this corner. So we're saying, okay, you have to do this. And you have to get an easement or you have to, a lot line adjustment with this landowner in order to, because they can't get a bank loan because that house is in the actual right of way.
Is the road.
We're not changing any of the right of ways. So I just don't want that situation to go up. So if we use, um, right of way, center of the right of way. I think we eliminate that problem.
Would you be more comfortable if I watched your Meredith's zoning ordinance, so you could see how they dealt with it?
Oh, it'd be, it'd be helpful to see what their wording is.
You don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Well, the other question.
Their wording is roadway.
Does anybody have a computer?
I think the wording of roadway makes a lot.
Should be.
In that sense, a traveled.
Traveled, yeah.
I think the right of way is the thing that confuses me.
And it would, and it confuses the building inspector.
You could call it traveled way, traveled roadway.
Existing road.
Existing.
Do we have the existing road?
What the password is to be able to go on the internet here?
I don't know. I don't have a computer to ask me.
Just put on there, from the center line of any public or private existing road, with that.
There's that, yeah, I think that.
Yeah.
I think it goes.
I mean.
Those houses in.
They go, they find out is how often does the road.
God, damn. I don't know.
But yeah, I don't, I don't think it matters. I think if we just look at the existing road. The lot lines obviously exist. People can. And we don't, and the whole intent of all of this.
Where was this one?
Has nothing to do with the right of way. It has to do with how close people build to.
Yeah, past Henry Gordon.
Let me back up just a bit. Is, are, are you comfortable with the concept of measuring from the center line?
I think it's much more.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do.
Is everybody comfortable with that? What if you got an opinion of how to word it from the, what used to be called the LGC, it's now the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and from the, um, North Country Council? And you looked at Meredith's wording? Would that be helpful to you?
North Country Council should help you.
Of course they should, yeah.
You pay them dues.
I can provide you that.
Because you pay them dues. They used to have a circuit right.
But what you're, what you're tripping up on is semantics, I think.
Yeah, I could tell.
I think we just, to me, the semantics are clear. It's just we need to craft something that actually makes sense.
But that would be helpful if we did that, if we got that information for you?
Sure.
New Hampshire Municipal, you know, New Hampshire Municipal Association's opinion.
Trying to do some.
North Country Council's opinion and a copy of Meredith's.
Or if you may be able to get the copy of Meredith's.
Um, Dick.
I'm kidding, Bartlett's. Bartlett's.
For shutting me up, I appreciate it.
But I couldn't.
But you just did.
Why I can't open up these.
But I appreciate it, that's why I'm saying it.
Try to be nice, probably.
What?
Try to be nice.
You did, that was very nice. All right, here we go.
So where are we actually in terms of public hearing?
Well, I guess we larked in a public hearing, we dissolved it. Probably smarter if you could do that.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Because now we're going to hammer it out.
We definitely have to make sure we get the public hearing notice properly though.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to.
You're going to have a certain number of people who, and I have no idea how many, who are resistant to any kind of change.
Of course.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the fact that we got one person morally resistant to change says something. Certainly, the building inspection process brought a few more people than one.
Well, like I said, you know, I, I heard from in the offices there and I heard from, Goody was complaining bitterly about this. And Kevin complained bitterly about this. And they, you would think, being building inspectors and hearing from people, the public, that, that needs to be done. And, and I think it's really important. And, um, um, and I think rather than being so negative to people when they come into town, we should be a little more open with them. Sure, you know, I mean, that's how all young people think when, you know, they come into town. Sure, all the retired people that are worth a ton of money, they don't really care one way or another. I'm talking about the people that are, um, to help us old people and to, um.
Well, the people that can be established.
Exactly, exactly.
That's how you do it.
Yes, exactly.
You get the chance to.
Mm-hmm. But to be told negative in the very beginning, it's not a, what can we do for you?
Keep cutting it off, cutting it off and what makes it too exclusive?
And it isn't like we, we're, we're coming up with something new. You know, like Jerry said, you mentioned to me, Bartlett uses it, the center line of any road.
Right. I wrote houses in Bartlett and that's, it was easy.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I was so happy when you suggested.
Yeah, well, I found it really convenient when I was building. You know, it was really straightforward.
Now. It simplifies.
Exactly, standardize and simplify it.
That's all you can ask for and have it.
And if there is a problem, don't we have a ZBA? In other words, if the one gentleman is, feels he's getting screwed because the road isn't where, can you go to the ZBA and say, look, I, you know, the road isn't where it's supposed to be and I'm losing X number of feet, you know, where he's gaining and, and they could make an exception.
There is, but then part of it is what the banks will lend money on.
Oh, that's true.
The banks won't lend money.
If you have to be on a right of.
If you're in the right of way. That, that's coming up, we're going to get to look at that.
Even if, even if the town gives an exception.
Yeah, the bank doesn't care because they.
That's right.
They're going to say, what's, why can't we attach?
Yeah.
They want to protect their investment, so they're going to say.
You take it back.
Well, what's the right of way sold? Is that why it's there?
No.
Fred Brad Dallas' house was, they sold the right of way, they gave him that in his house lot, was the right of way.
Well, this one, the right of way is still established, and the road is not where it's built either, but the house was constructed in the right of way, so we had two problems, so anyway. So we need to have those words pretty well worked out.
Under definition, your 3.36, street slash road, quote unquote, means a state highway or a town highway, streets, road, avenue, land, and/or other way, including a private roadway, which exists for vehicular traffic, exclusive of the driveway serving rather than through adjacent lots.
Can't believe it.
So, under your own definition, you're saying that exists for travel?
For road, it doesn't say, do we have a definition of right of way?
Street slash road means a state highway, a town highway, a street, a road, an avenue, land and/or other way, including a private roadway, which exists for vehicular travel.
But we don't have additional.
We don't have a problem with that, I mean, that's what we're talking about, street road would be the traveled way. What we're talking about is right of way, because our zoning ordinance, at present, says you gotta measure from the edge of the right of way.
No, but it is the same right of way.
Um, I think on the fourth point.
No, I think he's saying the definition is made.
Under definition.
Yeah.
Right, we define road.
She said that we don't have a definition for right of way.
No, you have one for a street slash road.
Exactly, that's what I said.
We don't have a definition for right of way.
Which is what we are discussing now, as to whether to leave those words in or to eliminate.
Well, I would like to, and without ruining our timeframe, well, let's go, we're hung up on words right here, right now. Let's, can we get through the other sections?
Okay.
Yeah, looking at the Meredith one, I don't find the wording that would help to clarify it for me. It talks about with shorefront lots, the minimum stepback from the shoreline shall be this, and then a minimum stepback from the highway shall be 30 feet from the property line. So maybe find it a different way in another spot, but.
Okay, they say property line, then.
If they say property line.
Why don't you take it and look for it, I've been looking and don't see it any better described.
The property line would be the edge of the right of way.
Or the seven right of way.
No, the property, if it's abandoned, then you go to the center.
All right, so we, yeah, so.
But not until that road is abandoned can anybody claim anything within the right of way.
For the guy on your right, so you're from the edge.
With the lot line?
Yeah, the lot, you just said the lot line's at the edge of the right of way. But that's if the town owns it, that goes right back to what I was saying originally.
If the town owns the right of way?
Or is it just like an easement, where the property owners, their boundary line is the center of the right of way?
Yes.
Which isn't? And it's, I'm gonna suspect that if you start looking at deeds, you're gonna find some roads where it's the edge, the town owns the right of way, and in other places where the town does not own it, and it's under its line. Because I know in the research I did on Cameron Drive, is that the town does own all the way down the center of Cameron Drive.
Well, they own 50 feet.
Yeah, so they own the right of way.
Yeah.
But.
The town.
So the property line in that case.
The right of way is just, what is this, it's the right of way. And they establish that so that you knew where you built your stone wall. You built it along the edge of the right of way.
Who owns the land underneath the road?
Okay, the town has the right of way, so they own it until they abandon it. It's like, okay, I'm gonna let you, you know, use my vote, but then who?
But the town doesn't actually own it and pay taxes on it, right? I mean, is it?
The town wouldn't pay taxes.
Well, true, but I mean, the homeowner owns that land and pays taxes, no?
No, they do not.
But if the property line is at the edge of the right of way, then who does own the land? Who gets the land if the town abandons it, because?
That's the.
That's the question. Kind of fuzzy.
I can't describe it, I know what the, because it happens on a Class 6 road. Okay, the Class 6 road was abandoned, that Class 6 road was a right of way. Nobody owned it, neither side landowner owned it.
No.
It was a right of way.
And then what happens to it, what's the?
Okay, then, a town vote voted to abandon the right of way. Okay, they didn't sell it, the town didn't say, okay, we're gonna sell this land off.
And strip the land.
They just abandoned their rights to that, and then it goes back to the land, landowner on either side.
So when you're, okay, I think you're, what you're alluding to is the fact that every piece of land has a bundle of rights. And so what you're saying is that the town, by having a town road right of way, is the right to put, and the town to put a road on it is what they have, and that the land itself is owned by the two people on land on either side.
They will own it if the town abandons.
Yeah, but their law rules on either side of it.
Their tax bill is going to go up, because the volume of their lot is going to increase. So they're not paying a thing on it now, and they didn't buy it.
And it's not their deed?
Right, but if the town abandons that way, then.
I should call it.
Right, I said, the town's not gonna sell it, it goes back to the land.
That's what it says on my deed. That's what it says on.
Really, we mess with deeds.
Nice.
Okay, let's have setbacks. No.
No.
Sorry, I misspoke, nonconforming structure of a building.
Well, anyway, just to say, so we still haven't decided whether to keep the word right of way in or not?
No.
Right, we're waiting for further.
He's working on it.
Disgusting discussion.
Disgusting might be true, too. That wasn't important, it was, all right, sorry, anyway, nonconformal structure.
They, Meredith uses the word feet from the center line of traveled way.
Would we have to have, would that force a second public hearing? If we don't go to this upcoming one with the language already set?
Yeah, we should, we, for real public hearing, we need to have the language set and put out.
Right, but the next meeting is the public hearing on this.
Yeah, right.
And then if we change anything from that meeting?
I think we've already, we've identified that there probably needs to be a change, so it would mean that we're almost, the second one's almost necessary at this point, unless we decide on others tonight.
Well, we should decide one way or the other tonight, and then get an opinion on it, and see if we have to change it back. So we got a 50-fifth chance of, oh, we can change it.
So I move that we change that to read, either traveled way, roadway, or existing road.
Well, since we define road.
And remove the right of way language.
I think that makes much more sense.
Okay, would you? Center line of the existing road?
I'm open to roadway, traveled way.
We define street road, which is what Jerry.
Or, okay, we're just gonna do road.
Roads.
Right, I'm just using that.
So they use, they use the phrase, traveled way. But they have, Meredith is confusing, because they have like 50 districts.
Yeah.
But they, when they're talking about center line, they're saying the traveled way, which you can call it whatever you want.
And that's interesting, because that's rear stepback is 65 feet from the center line of the traveled way.
Yeah, that's on legal, and it's different for every district.
Okay.
But the word they use is traveled way.
Oh, and that's, I see, the rear stepback is where the roadway is, because the front stepback is from the shoreline?
Right.
Okay, I get it.
But since we define road, I think we can just simply remove the word right of way.
And what do you mean, road?
No, road's there.
Oh, it's in, I'm sorry.
Many public or private road.
Scott made a motion, just.
I'm sorry.
To remove the word right of way, to utilize, okay, but we.
I thought we had done that.
No, well, you didn't, not on what's the.
We never voted on it, so.
Oh, but I did have a question mark and parentheses that from the last meeting we did have, by the way.
I'd like to have a motion on these words.
So Scott made a motion to remove the wording right of way. Are we gonna enter that motion and utilize another wording, or no?
No.
Just remove those words.
It's a special private road, and road is defined quite nicely.
Wait a second, please.
Yeah, I see.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are the words we're going to bring forward.
So there'll be a period right after private road?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, Cole, I hate to say this.
Is that what it is?
The last line is of the definition of road, after it's talking about highway, street, road, avenue, land, blah, 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 for existing for vehicular travel, exclusives of driveway serving, blah, 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 blah. The term street road shall include the entire right of way.
Well, maybe we need to do just that, then, take that out of there. I mean, I just wanted to get two done, I don't care about, we really need to go back and redo a lot of stuff in the zoning, but, to make it simpler, but.
So what is it due for?
That was it, and then 86.
We can certainly then say, private or public roadway.
It says, for any public or private road, purely.
I think if we say roadway, that would, or if we say existing road, existing.
Road, existing for, well.
Private, existing, private, public road.
But then you still got the definition.
Well, actually, if you're talking about, it includes the entire right of way.
So roadway would be.
So it would just be, if we say the center of the traveled road.
Road, we've got the entire right of way.
Then we got the right of way, but you're just going from the center of the traveled road.
Yeah.
Center line of any public or private traveled road, this is the word traveled before the, at the private, is that what you're talking?
I think we could handle it by saying the center line of any traveled way in the public or private, in a public or private road.
From the center line.
Of the traveled way of any public or private road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Center line of any public or private existing road, but that doesn't include the traveled way, I think the traveled way is what we need to.
The road exists on papers.
I'd use the word traveled way.
I'm not really, I'm not, what does this sentence really mean? Yeah, that's the one. I'd like to make another motion to remove that. I mean, the term street road shall include the entire right of way, what is, what is that include here? How's it feel?
Well, the road then is, even though you've got a small amount of the road that is paved, or it's single tract or however.
Oh, I get you now. It's even, even the grassy part of the right of way.
If the, if the right of way is, extends on either side, or on one side or the other.
Which it does.
If the road is sectioned on the right of way.
Yeah, it's the drainage as well, it's the full 50 feet, if the road's on, the paved way's on, the traveled way's 20 feet, but the right of way is 50.
You have 15 or so.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's.
And so we're talking about from the center, and whether it includes the whole right of way or not, if you're talking about the center of the traveled way.
I'm not sure that that makes a difference, in terms of how it, that, so now, now basically you're saying that this is, you know, you got the road, you got the right of way, so it includes the road, quote unquote, includes.
Well, so the road includes all of that.
Right.
Where the road is, and where it is, where it is on the land, and where it is on pavement, all of that is the road.
Right, but I think again, this property owner is still bound by the right of way, which is sort of the.
It is.
And this property owner is bound by the.
That's the road.
So if you say the center of the traveled way of any public or private road.
Yeah. So.
Is that true?
Yeah. I think you can still just leave road, and the definition describes what road encompasses, and I think that goes.
Right.
Yeah, it works.
I see that in this work.
I agree with that, you only have to say the center line of the traveled way or the road, and we have addition of the road, the definition of road includes.
But if the road goes out of the right of way, it's still perhaps safe off of the road.
Where would the center be, if you just leave it as a road, and the road includes the entire driveway? Where is the center then of?
You're saying the traveled road.
Of the right of way or of the road?
If, I'm saying if, you have it, just say, from the center line of the public or private road, and then we say that the road in our definition includes the right of way, then if the road is actually veers completely off the right of way, the way that Scott's drawn, I don't know if there's any.
Put the word traveled.
There's somebody, there's some pretty.
That's what I'm saying, you're saying.
The word traveled.
From the center of the traveled, the traveled way of a public or private road.
That sounds good.
Okay, so how do we read?
Here's the, RSA defining stepback means the distance between the nearest portion of a building and a lot or right of way line, whichever is closer, how does that help us?
No, see, they use right of way.
Yeah, but many counties don't.
And they would say, right of way, meaning it includes all present and proposed town, state, and federal highways, and the land on either side of saying is covered by statutes to determine the width of rights of way.
That seems to presuppose that the road is, the physical road is centered on the right of way, which.
Doesn't happen in Texas.
Apparently it's not the case, and so.
Well.
Well, I mean, probably not gonna cover every single case, so.
Exactly.
You have around 99%, or 98%.
And that's why you have a ZVA, that's what I was saying, we're never gonna cover them all.
I would just go from the end of the right of way and make a change by instead of 50 feet.
That we could, you're, it was the basis of our idea.
I would agree if the ordinance should refer to the traveled way.
Okay.
The traveled.
Or the roadway, if everyone agrees. Do we vote down what we just said, where we just deleted?
Yes, we need to, you need to say it again.
Okay, so do another, or?
Yeah.
Amend your.
Amend, vote to amend.
Amend, I mean, the amendment that I proposed is, it's all it did was remove the wording right of way.
Okay, we removed the word of private way, now we wanna add.
Now we wanna add.
Okay, so this is.
Traveled.
Yeah, to do it in the question.
Any public, the traveled.
Traveled way of.
Way of any private, public or private road.
Right, you're adding the words traveled way, the center line of the traveled way, of any public and private road.
Can I add a line of?
Would someone not interpret roadway as meaning the physical road?
No.
No.
Okay.
Even if, even if a dirt road with swales on either side of it, you can still determine where the center of it is.
No, no, I'm just saying, if I, if we already use the word roadway, because the traveled way, the traveled, how would you have it?
But we read the center of.
From the center of. Of the traveled way of any public or private roadway.
To me, sounds a little confusing, and that's why I'm just, I'm asking if we substitute roadway for road under the.
From the.
Not the private or public roadway, is roadway sufficient?
Be roadway, public or private roadway.
Roadway.
Right, and is that sufficient to delineate it from a right of way?
Yes.
So then we wouldn't talk about traveled way?
I did say in traveled way and then road, I mean. I did say in traveled way and then road, I mean.
Then let's, you wanna go to existing, because.
We had that in there before when you mentioned it, of any existing road. Center line of any public or private existing road.
And you put the existing.
Roadway is better wording in terms of how.
Right, so you wanna say.
But again, I'm asking that roadway narrowly defined enough.
I was gonna say from the.
I drew a sketch out towards, that makes it clear.
Measure from the center line.
Okay, let me throw this out for consideration. Center line of the, of any existing public or private roadway.
Yep.
Center line, or here from the center line.
Of any existing.
Does that sound like what we're wanting?
Sounds good to me.
Of any existing one?
Public or private roadway.
Okay.
Roadway. Do we need to change in our definition, instead of private road, make it private roadway?
No. No, we wanna leave road as encompassing the right of way, the way that.
Yeah.
By saying roadway, we're popping up something that's a little different.
Than we need to define it.
It's, road mean, basically road is roadway and the right of way.
Okay, so typically.
We're removing the right of way portion of the road by saying roadway.
Yeah, and it's still encompassed in the definition.
So what we've done in the past with our ordinance, whenever there's been a capital, you know, like private road, it refers back to the definitions.
Right, we define road.
So maybe we, or we could say private road or public roadway. Private or public.
Private, no, it's because both of them are going to say the same thing.
Okay.
You're not gonna change the words, public or private road or roadway, whichever one, but you're not gonna have one of each.
Okay, so the question is, do we change definitions? Do we rejigger it here? How do you want to handle it?
Well, let's not change the definition.
I don't think we have to change.
If we're gonna use roadway, then do we need to add a definition for road?
No, well, why not just road?
Just what road is road, eh?
From the center line of any existing public or private road.
Right, but that road encompasses both the physical road and the right of way.
But that's not a bad thing. Whatever situation they go to.
No, no, but I might, I'm drawing here, so here's the right of way.
Yeah.
Here's the road with the car on it. So the, the center of those two at this point is going to be right here, right? So that means that this property owner can build twenty-five feet.
So we're saying.
Fifty, fifty feet.
Existing public.
Fifty feet of the center of the road. Because that's the center of the road.
But it's not existing. We're saying that it has, from the center line of existing.
The right of way exists, but it just.
No, no, no.
Existing road.
Measure from the center line of any existing public or private road.
Private road, period.
We're not measuring from the right of way again.
I thought we took that out, right away.
You're saying existing road, but I'm not sure that that still doesn't, road doesn't still.
Why doesn't the word traveled way do it for you?
Because it doesn't reference the definition road.
Well, why don't we put in a definition?
What, where, where?
I don't know, we had, we had both there, my original suggestion.
I might have put in traveled way. I mean, what, what's either a traveled way?
A road.
So when you could say.
It's a traveled way is where the vehicles go.
So the center line of the traveled way of any public or private road. And the road includes where the road is, as well as its right of way, which for most, most of the time, they are together, not a problem. And for the times that they're askew, if that causes a problem for somebody, and they really get down to the nitty gritty and it's a problem, they can do it in CVA.
That's what I said.
Right.
I, I thought the whole point is just to remove right of way from.
Yes, we did.
But by saying road, you're still.
Well.
Via the definition.
Yeah, but if you say traveled way.
So why not just just traveled way, remove the word road altogether?
Okay.
That's just a public or private, existing public or private traveled way. Measure from the center line of any existing public or private.
Traveled way.
Okay, so then a traveled.
And we gotta have a definition of traveled way.
The building is measuring, the homeowner will have no trouble at all measuring it.
Yeah, the traveled way, we've got, we've got some snow.
It's called a road.
We've got, we've got trails, those are traveled ways.
But they're not a town right of way.
Yeah.
I think you're better off to keep the road in the definition.
If you, if you wanna use traveled way, then you have to define it.
I go back to roadway. Really appreciate you doing that.
All right, so we've got three options.
So I don't see why, why you're hung up on roadway. I, I'm seeing why, I mean, I understand, you know, but measure from the center line of any existing public or private roadway is.
Using the word way.
It's clear.
Who wouldn't understand that?
Who wouldn't understand that? But you go back to the definition of road is what you're getting hung up on, where it brings in.
The right of way.
Right of way.
So that's why I'm saying roadway, we define roadway as an, an existing.
Travelled way.
And public or private.
And again, to Frank's, to Frank's point.
Or maybe it's in low cases.
What is, what is the progress of the ordinance? You guys have discussed very clearly what, what you're shooting for. We're shooting for clarity.
Yeah.
We're shooting for the common good of the community. I mean, that's what, that's why I didn't see why that was ambiguous. Where everything we do, I think, is for the common good. Yeah, but I mean, my point is, is that you have it just really dilly. You, you discussed it thoroughly.
And the whole point of setback is to weigh away from the road.
No, we have.
You have to make sure that all of our roads and roadways are.
Well, we can't go there.
In the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
As we travel forward.
Okay, so what is the exam, the bottom line here? From the center line, what?
Can we have the center line of any existing public or private roadway?
Roadway or road?
I like road, he likes roadway, I don't.
If we're gonna say road, then you should say the traveled way.
Make up.
Which we don't.
Would it make you feel good if you might road slash traveled way?
Yeah.
How about we, traveled way on any private or public road.
That's what I hear.
And we have a definition.
Yeah, there you go, right there.
And we have a definition.
Way.
Travelway along any public or private road. Measure from the center line of any existing traveled way.
I had removed existing.
How about putting in?
We had that at the very beginning, because I have it here written down already, just what you said.
So a definition of traveled way could say means the portion of a public or private road existing and used for transportation. And that we were admitting the right of way.
We don't need.
We don't need all that.
I, I am coming to the traveled way. If we can keep it concise.
Simple.
Picking a portion of the road definition down.
Right.
And I don't think we need to.
Okay, so.
The traveled way will exclude the right of way.
Let's, let's.
But it doesn't define it, it doesn't exclude the right of way.
Travelway, what is?
Of the existing traveled way.
Period.
From the center line of the existing travel, of, of any existing.
Of the existing, of the existing way of any.
Traveled way.
Um, any public or private road. Not using the word existing.
Perfect, not using the word existing? From the center line of the, of any public or private.
Yeah, I don't think you can use existing if.
Travelled way.
From the center line of any, any traveled way.
From the center line of any.
No, that would make it.
I'm gonna make a, a motion.
Okay.
That the wording for four point three, point one, point two, point one, be from the center line of the existing traveled way of any public or private road.
You said that twice.
Be fifty feet. And that would go for both three point two, point, three point, four point three, point one, point two, as well as.
Similar on the existing traveled.
Point three.
Right, right.
It doesn't sit.
Shall I read that back and see if we have a. From the center line of any, from the center line of the existing traveled way of any public or private road.
You don't need existing.
Yeah, I think existing is difficult because.
You don't need existing.
Going forward as well. Right?
The center line of any traveled way on public or private roads, isn't that what you said?
From the center line of the traveled way of any public or private road. Okay, and existing is all. I second it.
Is that great, Chris?
Good thing I got refill at home.
Is there any further discussion?
I hope not.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are the words we're gonna bring forward.
Okay.
That was easy.
Yeah.
It's a page.
And this is a teeth, I bet.
Yeah.
You spoke up a little bit.
I proposed it at the beginning.
All right, all right, all right, let's not go backwards. We've made progress.
Yes, we have.
Non-conforming structure of building? Two point two point two.
We have the road right of way in there again. Which one are we doing?
Two point, two point two point three.
So what do we do about the instance that Frank brought up, where that house on Candy Kane Lane was getting, you know, applying for variants? You know, to what extent is it?
The footprint.
Yeah.
The, the footprint. I, I have a question on that.
Frank was exactly, if I can, Frank was exactly right. By removing the volume restriction. If a man has a porch, it's part of the structure. He can, by, if you change it this way, he would be able to enclose the porch and make it part of his living space. He would not be able to then add a deck on the house after that.
We don't have a definition for structure here, but we go by the definition of structure based on the.
The RSA by which you have the power to do this defines structure. And Frank is exactly right when he says a deck or a.
To a certain size.
Well, I don't think we need to get hung up on deck, because you could have, you know, a single story portion of your house into the right, you know, into the setback.
And you wanna.
And then you have, you, you got the rest of the house, it's two stories, and you wanna just build up that single story portion. Forget about whether deck is.
Right.
Yeah, because it says structure, and the structure doesn't say just build.
Okay, so I mean, increase the volume of a portion of the house that's in the.
That's non-conforming. Right, but, and, and again, I'm gonna, the, the best example I can give you is Diffy property. That was a porch, that was a screened porch. They've now closed it and made it part of the living space. They also raised the roof so that you have headroom inside the second, second level. And they did that right across from the fire. I mean, the, the reason for setback in the, when the plan were first did it, Frank's definition notwithstanding, had nothing to do with creating a scenic, it had to do with snow removal, off-street parking, and possible improvement to the road. That was the only thing, they wanted to do it, as Frank said, to keep the rural quality. And the attorney said, you can't do that. Right, that was turned down as a reason. That, that is not a valid reason. Exactly. Now, on two point two point three, a non-conforming structure or building may be moved, this is your wording, may be moved, enlarged, altered, restored, or replaced within the boundaries of the lot it occupied at the time this ordinance took effect, providing the change does not make the structure more non-conforming in any way. Now that says you can't go further into any setback. You can't go higher than thirty-five feet. You have all those ordinance in there, and I suggest to you that non-conforming in any way could be the end of the ordinance. You could eliminate everything else after that. The question hinges on non, what non-conforming means. Non-conforming means the structure does not comport with the current zoning ordinance. That's what non-conforming means. In other words, it may be that the house is entirely built in a setback.
Could be.
I mean, there's places like that in Jackson.
Oh, sure. So Frank's concern is increasing the volume of.
Decks.
Of a structure that is not, that is not conforming.
Right.
I personally don't really see why that's much of a problem.
Exactly.
It is.
But we could, there's an in-between, we could say you can't increase the volume of the non-conforming portion of the structure.
What's we say now?
No.
That's what we do now.
No, you could.
No, don't we say now is we can't increase the vol, volume of a structure that's not conforming?
You may not make it any more non-conforming than it is, meaning, and, and by that, if you wanted to describe what that means, you can, but I don't think it's necessary, because your ordinance doesn't. It means if your, your house cannot be enlarged as a footprint.
Okay, what we have now in the ordinance is the first sentence which Jerry just read, but the present ordinance now in, continues on by saying by way of example and not limitation.
Yeah, and by the way, that's very inappropriate for a ordinance.
Well, we, we decided before we were gonna take that out of there and then put, start the next sentence with more non-conforming anyway means that the structure or building positioned within a prescribed.
But you don't need to define what more non-conforming means, because it's part of your ordinances. You, I mean, you can, it doesn't hurt, but there.
Let me see, you're, it does say, it says the, the structure or building within the prescribed setback.
And you could just say C-sections four point three, point one, point two, and four point three, point two, point three.
Yeah, if you wanted to.
And, you know.
Yeah.
And does that get all out, because you're referring to those non-conforming stations?
Just put the numbers.
That's simplified.
So Jerry's right, I mean, Jerry and Frank are right. If we make the changes that we have here, then you can increase the volume.
Where, where that came into play a couple times was someone had a deck, and the whole structure of the house was in, was non-conforming. What he wanted to do, he realized he wouldn't be allowed to enclose the deck. They first tried to make it a three-season deck, but in closing, they'll put a roof over it and screening it in. Zoning board said no. He then said, well, can I enclose underneath it and make that storage area? And we said yes. And yet that increased the volume of the property. So we've not been consistent on how we define volume. There were two houses up in the Mallowan Road section that we wanted to do just that, put a dormer in, so they could use the second floor. Zoning board turned them down, but they didn't, I mean, so it's. You know, we have to get away from arbitrary decisions. Yes, and the whole thing, the whole thing was put in because of snowflaing. Now, let's, let's take another property, let's, let's take, because that's where it's really concerning us, is in the village district. Look at the Thompson House. Let's say they said, we realize we can't go closer to the road than the, the front porch is, but we'd like to enclose the front porch. What would be the harm? How is the town harmed?
It's already taken up the space area, not as used on a burden.
Yeah, I think my concern would be more environmental, rather than, you know, I Yeah, I think my concern would be more environmental rather than, you know, I think it's fine if Thompson House wanted to enclose their porch or something or other. That's not, that doesn't challenge anything, but an area that expands more toward a river, you know.
They can't.
They can't.
We have ordinances to protect us.
They can't do that.
Yeah, that's close.
You take the house up on, off Mallow Road, on Candy Cane Lane, so they've got that deck that is toward the river. If they enclose that.
How does that affect?
I'm, well, I'm wondering.
Environmentally, the, the, that's what bothers me about the conservation district is so worried about it being a setback. The whole point is to protect the river.
Yeah.
Right. And, you know, the only thing he came up with, well, it made the ground underneath the deck more permanent, it always there. It doesn't do anything. Cutting the trees is, is the big problem with the ground.
Right, it's not supposed to be.
Yeah.
Well, what about, what about if he has a deck, though, he wants to expand it and make it into, you know, a two-story house above the deck? Aren't you gonna have to put a foundation there? You're gonna have to dig into it. It's gonna cause some disruption to soil in that area.
Then perhaps.
What are you talking about? It can leave the deck.
What you're saying is that he's gonna put a foundation under the deck, like they did right here at Decks. They had to do that. They still have to meet all the state code, or if they can't do it.
But I'm just talking about preserving the river.
Right.
Yeah, and you've got a point there. I mean, it can be done, but that was started, you know. Do they remove the foundation? I guess you have to put a new foundation in.
If you're gonna build a, yeah.
And not make the area, but they get it in San Francisco, they throw a whole new foundation on there.
Right, but, but again, I mean, other than that, something during the construction days. I think, I don't see that filter. And I don't, but I just don't see that again, it's gonna have that much.
No, I mean, I could see that argument, though.
Certainly a lot less than, as you said, clearing my ground.
Dickey did it, and, and he's right in, you know, boys, that is a wetland where they put those foundations, but they, you know, they were, they went in there with, you know, they put in the.
Be in the devil's ass.
They had to get it. No, it was a good point, but they.
Retaining.
They still have to go to DES and get approvals and how they're gonna do it.
I mean, I, I think part of the setback is aesthetics, you know, and preserving that rural quality to some degree. And I think increasing the volume of the portion of the building within the setback has a marginal negative impact on the aesthetics. Again, it turns out a rural thing, but, and me personally, balancing that against the ability to improve a lot of structures in Jackson, which also would improve the aesthetics in another way, and allow, you know, damage and all that follow on, so.
It also reset.
In my, in my mind, it's worth doing, it's worth doing, and increase volume, because yes, there's a slight negative impact, but a greater positive.
And look, and look. But look across the street, look at the impact. I, when, when I lived here in the nineties.
I think that's great.
That was the worst pit in the world. It could only be related to the lowest life people. They were getting arrested, they were dealing drugs out of it, and now that he'd been able to improve it, instead of getting all lives.
The sad thing is that that could have happened years ago. Many people tried to buy that, and they were told they couldn't do it. Somehow Dickey, and I, I don't know, but someday we might know. How Dickey still looked at that property, he said, I can get this approved. And he did, and to the benefit of the town.
For men's benefit.
But how about a situation where in the River Conservation District? I mean, I, I think it'd be great if we could come up with some wording that would prevent things from being constructed where they might get washed out by, you know, the hundred-year flood or whatever.
Well, that's, we were protecting that with all the language of the flood.
Right, but if we're.
Kind of thinking, building, it's already there.
Simply a deck that's uncovered, and then they suddenly cover it.
It's down a river.
What do you mean?
And, and in other words, you're saying if you, if suddenly a flood comes, that deck is down the river into your yard.
Okay, but now, what if you've built a whole section of your house on it?
Yeah, the deal of flood insurance.
But that's, that's, I'm trying to, I mean, I, I have gone to the zoning board, to the zoning board about that and haven't listened to any of the arguments, but wasn't that basically what it was about? They wanted.
Candy Cane Lane? That, that was.
No, no.
So we, you, we would never get that on.
No.
It would, the Candy Cane Lane, that's, that's fifty feet above the river.
I think Scott had a very valid viewpoint.
You know, there are no cases.
Is that if you balance the benefit against any possible, you're good. I, I loved his explanation of that. That, that to me was very important.
Yeah, it was good.
Very close.
But, but that is.
Which were you referring to?
I don't know.
Well, sometimes you can't save people from themselves either. I mean, if that's what they choose to do, then, one, they won't have insurance.
If they're in the.
Because, yeah.
Are there any houses in the flood plain now?
What?
Are there lots of houses in the flood plain here? You know, because it has to be existing already.
Well, we could.
Anyone might be up in the notch, the law cabin by the Ellis, but that's been there for, God knows how long. I think he still owns it.
Any houses in the flood plain?
But they're basically.
Well, my question is, were there any houses that were damaged by when Irene came through, because that really shows.
Oh, Irene wasn't, you should have been here at Hurricane Carol.
So what, did Irene do anything?
They had water up to the J-Town.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, every, every storm.
Couple of caddies went down to the circle.
One of them, sixteen got washed out by the.
How about, how about the house?
Yeah, we've got pictures of J-Town underwater.
Right over here, the one right on the river, that, the river was actually flooding through it, they had, they already had, what, was it, seven bedrooms or something in the thing? You know, the one right behind the school.
Oh, oh, that one, yes.
The old ski lodge.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they had seven bedrooms, and they wanted to build, the, the town got hung up on allowing them to build a septic system. And our town engineer said, wait a minute, there are a lot, they've got the rooms, you can't, they exist. You can't go in there and close them up. So allowing him to build the biggest septic system he could possibly build is the right thing to do.
Well, Sandy didn't have one, it was flowing out.
But, I mean, so there are, there are going to be properties that.
Can't fix.
I mean, usually we have ready ordinance that says, we're gonna let you do it unless we don't like it.
Well, yeah. They all used to go in the well, kept them.
Okay, let's get the words that, so, straight across the board. So, now we're back to non-conforming structures or buildings.
Oh, yeah, John, John, I mean.
Stopping that reference.
Yeah, and non-conforming by period, and then, um, referencing the. Referencing.
The numbers.
The numbers, yeah. Four point three.
That's your three set.
Point two point whatever, the one, the two setbacks you guys, but then, and also put the reference in for the height, and then you don't have to have that last one.
Yeah, and that's, in other words, if you, if you stop it in any way, done, see sections.
Blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
That, that works.
That, that covers.
Yeah.
For non-conforming uses. And you're not gonna claim the structure doesn't exceed the purpose.
Well, it starts out with non-conforming from the very beginning.
Right.
It sentenced us.
That was a good idea, John.
And also, four point.
Good for one.
One point three, which is building by.
All three of them, have three references.
All three are.
May I get a vote on that?
Sure.
Who, who made the motion? You made the motion.
I did? Okay, I'll make a motion that we ended at, at non-conforming in any way, and just reference after that, see four point three point one point two, four point three point two point three, as well as four point one point three.
You had to put the word up.
I'll second that.
Otherwise, or, as, whatever, can, can, do we think?
It does, it makes a structure more, what, what are we, what are we saying?
You said C-sections, and then you said, and you named them, and then you said something before the one point, four point one point three, otherwise, or whatever.
He said also.
Oh, also.
You don't need also, though.
No, you don't need also.
You can say see.
Those are what you're saying, because for all three of them.
Okay, we moved and seconded.
We called that the John, John Allen ordinance.
Call in favor of John Allen.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed?
Yay! Have you done yet?
Well, sports fans, we have a.
Seven-ten meters.
What? I know. You don't think anyone would be out here?
Before we go on to the, do you mind if I just, for, for my notes sake here, how they're gonna get this notice properly in the paper, so that we know who's gonna do it?
It will be posted here and at the post office.
So what if Frank won in there?
What?
With both of the requirements. That's what I wanted to get, you know, what Frank said.
Do you really need to put? We will have.
I think that wording, but it has to be available.
It has to be available.
Here and.
On the notice, you can say the exact wording is available at, these are in the town office, and it is also available on the website.
Website, posted in the post office, available at the.
And the website that was improperly cited, did not even say you could go there then, it said when it's finalized, it will be posted at. So it was irrelevant.
Oh, what he was saying.
Before we end the meeting, can I also, Laura, you had written out one of the reasons why we were suggesting the zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
And it clarifies a lot of things for people, the way you have it defined in here. Maybe this needs to be put on E-news as well to, to try to explain it.
Okay.
These were, I think you.
Kathleen, I'll go with what he has always maintained, is that ninety percent of people won't know what the heck to talk about.
I understand that, but I just.
So what I would do if I did this, if everyone's okay with it, is just put zoning ordinance one, and, 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 just maybe a quick description on.
What it does.
What it does. Yeah, I didn't do that. And then zoning ordinance two, this will, you know, remove the, and before I did it, I'd run it by Dick anyway, something like that.
But do we need to say, okay, go ahead and do this?
This will do exactly.
This is just how we post it.
Oh, okay.
This isn't changing anything. This is how we post it. So we're gonna have the words available here on the board.
Yep, yep.
For anybody to read.
Okay, I was asking if we could take what I had written, put the definition, you know, there, and then maybe put it in E-news.
Yeah, but this is what's gonna happen.
And then Frank would, there's his reasons, you know, very, you know.
Yeah, that's what.
If we agree with one.
This is, I think this is great, and I think it needs to be, one of the reasons why we're making the changes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have one last thing, say, merger.
Oh, yeah.
Would you like to go ahead with that?
Up to you guys.
Okay.
And I think, John, you'd have to preface it with this.
For?
In other words, when she, when you're, when you're preparing it, as you're gonna enter it, this has to precede it.
On the warrant article, or?
Yes, no, when you're, when you're posting your changes, right, those, this, this is the way it appears on the warrant.
Oh, on the warrant?
Yeah.
Hold on, I know, before we go further, we did make one error here, and I spotted it, and actually somebody else spotted it, pointed it out to me. We're not dealing with two ordinances. We're dealing with three, and we have to make that on the ballot. We have to make that obvious because of the setback is in two sections in the zoning ordinance, so that when we, when we lay it out, we have to, I'm trying to look for it here.
The numbers you're referring to are four point three point one point two and four point two, three point two point three. It's the setbacks in the both districts. That's what you're referring to.
And so when we, when we ask, you know, is the town, the town vote for, we have to do it in three separate ballot questions.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all. And we didn't, we haven't delineated that yet, but I think we can do it at the next town we're here.
Or any ballot questions.
It's three different, yeah.
What's the, what's the third one?
Request.
The third one's the volume.
Oh, the volume one.
Two setbacks and one.
And this has to precede each other.
Two lot merger. Between two Hardings, Dexter's Lot.
Which is no longer Dexter's.
Which is no longer Dexter's, but that's what's on the tax rolls. Parkman, Dexter, Harding, and Sam and Betsy.
So, uh, the card's a bit old, but online it has ours, it has our name on it.
Okay. Uh, then my question is, what happens to lot eleven?
So lot eleven, it either become the name of the new lot, or, lot eleven is about acres, eight, one point six acres.
Yes.
And lot twelve A is about twelve or so acres.
A is eleven point seven nine.
Okay, and so.
That's about twelve.
Basically, the majority of those lots, all of lot eleven and most of twelve A are conservation easement lands and current use lands. And so they're not developable anymore than they are.
My, my only question, okay, you're gonna merge A and B?
No, not A and B, we're gonna merge eleven and A.
Eleven and twelve A?
Oh, okay.
Eleven and twelve A.
Okay.
I've got it now. So the little one point six and the small house.
That's one where Nancy Nelson, Nancy Nelson was running it in nineteen fifty-five when the building burned down on eleven.
Where is eleven?
It's where the Skeetown Trail starts, just near Russell Oakulvert.
South of the parking lot.
Yeah, okay, you got the parking lot, the parking lot is not on your land, but your land then start, that's right.
Land starts right at the start of the bridge, and goes across the bridge, and the first hundred yards or so, hundred and fifty yards of that are lot eleven.
Okay, but there's nothing on it now except for trees.
Anybody, but would anyone like, I can pull the tax map in if you wanna see it on flat surface.
Is it on those?
No.
Basically, it's, um.
Well, I can get it, I have the page open right now.
We've been at this since four o'clock.
That's why I went home and had a bowl of soup.
A blank piece of land.
We need to go. I said, I didn't even eat dinner yet. I had a bowl of soup for lunch tonight.
You paid for it, really?
I didn't know what I was gonna do for the whole, that's right, I just get beyond it after a while, I don't bother to eat.
I know, you do.
Yeah.
So it makes no sense.
Tiny, you know, they have them standing forty-nine tents twice a year to spend for bills.
Okay, Carter Notch Road. What do they call that now?
Moody.
Moody.
Moody, no.
Anyway, you know where the Gilbridge.
Yeah.
Here's eleven, here's the parking lot for.
Oh, and this is the little one you wanna merge.
No, with eleven, we wanna merge with eleven.
Eleven and twelve A.
And twelve B is where our houses.
We've got it. Dexter had this little house, they're adding these together to make.
Adding all three?
No, just eleven and twelve A, because it's, it's to keep eleven as a separate lot. That was, that was how we got the easement, because we would, we would have been allowed to build a house where Nancy Nelson's house had been, but by being able to, to not do that and say we want it all in an easement, it worked.
So that's the.
It's, then that's an easement at this point?
So which is Dexter's lot, Dexter's lot on there?
He, he owns, he used to own eleven and twelve A, and his house is in this little corner over here.
Oh, okay, all right, so.
It's not separately marked, except on the map.
You have a very good plan tonight.
Upper Saco Valley has, they've got point eight, ten seven acre reserve out of the whole easement for his house and land and gardens and.
They can get through as much as I wanted to.
You read too much, John.
Yeah, the budget.
Right, as far as.
The budget probably should be a second.
Yeah.
Really, I mean.
Yeah, but trying to get people to come to a meeting.
That's what I said, the budget should be a second.
No, I mean, it's barely, I mean, I thought it was a good thing you hired them to select a meeting, because otherwise, would they really even come to an extra meeting?
It's just hard for me to come to another meeting. I mean, I tried to do them all at once, but I can't.
They used to have the budget here in second.
Oh, I know they did, yeah.
Which is bad. Cause then you get to.
Saying the house property cheaper, we just weren't expecting them to sell.
Well, I think people have so much stuff going on. I mean, even for us being here, like you said, four, five hours in. I mean, you know, it's like, so it's fine if you. Just thank God we don't need snow out there.
Oh, I can't believe it.
Yeah, I know. Hey. I'd be.
Seventy-four, I was gonna work at Black.
That was the year I had.
They had three days.
Here, four days. I worked that year too deep.
Probably, I went to Dornary, I said, I can offer what I'm.
Yeah, you're gonna be out here fifteen, wow, I have. We sat there, it sounded bad in the middle.
Would it be all right being voted on this and you all recuse yourself? Accuse yourself or something.
Why do you leave the room, General?
Just scurry your... And that, now may I have a motion on...
Shall I, is nobody there?
On the favor?
Aye.
There you go.
I'll sign it.
So didn't have any snow maker?
They actually had snow, they kept it on the J-bar hill.
Yeah, my dad, my dad, but you know what, then it shouldn't make it, VW one.
It's stable.
You can lull it off and if you have a dog, it's...
And they're moving to Conway, the bums.
Oh.
Well, that's kind of, you know.
TD bag.
TD bag.
I know, I thought it was a weather to Corvett. And they answered me.
They answered you.
Oh, they're going to be self-immediate.
May I have a motion?